I'd like to bring this meeting to order.
Let us pray. Most loving, merciful Lord, we thank you for the blessings you bestow upon Southport every day, upon the city, upon the residents, upon the visitors and all who work here. We ask today that you guide us to make good and right decisions for the city. We ask also that you guide us toward patience, understanding and kindness. Amen.
I'm now going to read the ethic statement. If any members know of any conflict of interest or the appearance of a conflict of interest concerning matters on the agenda, please so state at this time. Not seeing any, as is always the case, if one should arise, please raise your hand and we'll discuss it at that time. Madam Clerk, are you ready for public comment?
Yes, sir. I have Greg McLean.
Yes, sir. I have Greg McLean.
Okay, gotcha. Good morning. My name is Greg McLean. I live at 304 East 8th Street here in Southport. We bought this house probably three or four years ago, and we are on the very corner of Cape Harbor and East 8th Street. And our backyard is bordered to the John N. Smith Cemetery. And when I bought the property, I had questions about drainage there because of the elevation. I have some experience and knowledge of drainage, and I worked at Fort Bragg for 31 years as a maintenance chief, and one of our responsibilities was water control, sediment basins, retention ponds, and even terraces to control flow of water. But I ask, and the owners nor the real estate people, they just weren't honest, to be honest with you. At the time, we loved the place. We still love the place. We love Southport. But last year about this time, we had a cloud burst last year, and my backyard filled up almost to the bottom of my house. It was below the rafters, but the whole backyard and my sheds had almost a foot and a half to two feet of water in them. None of my neighbors on each side of me had a problem because their house is higher. The problem is being on the corner, I have two streets that are much higher elevation than the house. My neighbors beside me, many years ago apparently put a pool in on their side yard next to us, and of course they elevated that for the pool. Well, now, all the water on my lot and about probably an acre of the cemetery is coming to my backyard. It's the only place it can go. The cemetery, thank goodness, is sandy hill, so when we have this cloud burst, the water does soak in fairly quickly. But my backyard has become a retention pond. And I got to looking this week, I've been looking real close at the elevation and any solutions I might be able to come up with. And what I noticed was that over the years, the water coming out of the cemetery has been washed in sand like it does, and it builds up and builds up next to my fence. So at one time, the land on the side of the cemetery was at the same level as my backyard, and I guess it all water collected there for years. Well, now, that elevation is much higher, maybe a foot or more, so all the water comes to my backyard. Now, I've taken precautions around the house. I've put in window wells. I have made diversions of water any way I could to alleviate this problem. We had a cloud burst again about a week ago, and again, my backyard filled up in a matter of minutes. I know we had like four or five inches of rain there in a couple hours, but it came up to my air conditioning unit. I actually had to cut my unit off. It's in the backyard. I know now that I've got to elevate my air conditioning unit to protect it, but the problem is it's becoming a health problem now. If I have water continuously going under my house, then I'm concerned about mold. I'm certainly concerned about the financial loss I may incur. What I'm proposing is a solution, the only solution I see. There's an area, my backyard is about 100 feet by 60 feet, and it's pretty much level. On the other side of the, across the fence to the cemetery, there's also an area there that's almost identical in dimensions. There's no graves there that I'm aware of. I understand there's some unmarked graves in the cemetery, and believe me, I'm a great person that appreciates history, and I'm fascinated with the history of Southport, so I certainly don't want to upset anything or ask anything that would hurt that cemetery and its famous history. But what I would request is for someone to take a look at it and see if we couldn't put a retention pond in, it'd be on the fence line, on the property line, that would alleviate my water problem and sort of keep the water from running everywhere. This is something, I don't know, I don't know what is the solution I have. I thought about, well, if I jacked the house up, if I jacked the house up and bring in field dirt, then the water's going to stay in the graveyard or in the cemetery anyway. That's not practical. A small retention pond would have a minimal cost, and it would alleviate my problems that I have. I don't know whether, I'm open for anyone that could maybe get me to a professional that could help me with this. I'm not an engineer, but I've done a lot of retention ponds and sediment basins at Fort Bragg. I was the maintenance chief there, and that was our key responsibilities. So that's what I'm here for. If someone could maybe give me a direction I need to go in and come up with some kind of solution possibly.
So, sir, to get a response, when you give public comment, we don't respond back and forth to get into a debate. But if you would like a response back from the city, would you see the clerk afterwards and give her your contact information so they can get back to you?
I will. I will.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
I have Megan Loffrin.
I did not know I was going to speak today. I live at 814 Cape Harbor Drive. My family's been there since '94. My parents never had any flooding problem until Florence, where we got completely wiped out. My father had to go to Florida to live with my sister while we fixed the house. We did not have flood insurance because it was not deemed a flood zone, so my parents never bought flood insurance. So we fixed the house ourselves. Then the cyclone came last year, and it blew us out again. So we just moved back to the property. We fortunately had flood insurance this time. We just moved back to the property, and we almost got it again the other day. So I am here to see if something can be done for that drainage system that runs between Cape Harbor and Memory Lane. When my parents lived there, it was cleaned out at least once a year. They would get water up close to the house, and it would come into the back porch a little bit, but it never caused them any need to replace the house like it has happened two times in almost exactly six years. So I certainly don't know about that business, but I am hoping that somebody here can figure something out because we are living on pins and needles every time the sky opens up. That's pretty much all I have to say. I'm looking for some resolution here and some help from the town.
Ma'am, the same response, if you'd just give the clerk your contact information.
Jack Flynn. Ms. Ann Logan.
So the topic of the day is flooding. I live at 611 North Fodel Avenue, three houses down from the hospital, and I have the drainage ditch in my backyard. I understand that in September, that was a once-in-a-lifetime storm. But Tuesday night, I was home alone, and thankfully, I was home, and I was able to get the water out of my sunroom. With the blessing of neighbors who helped me move my furniture and friends, we got the water out with minimal to no damage. I have documentation that dates back to 1979 that talks about the ditch and the causes of the ditch and how the ditch was cleared out repeatedly by the city. Last year, I called the city, the beginning of the hurricane season, and I spoke to Tom Stanley, who said, and I don't know if Tom's here or not, but he said to me on the phone that, well, it's not our responsibility, and I hope my guys don't get bit by a snake. I don't appreciate the response. Gentlemen did come and walk the ditch, but nothing was done about it. I notice now recently that they've surveyed the water, sewage, and electricity on the one side of Fodel. We've heard rumors that there's going to be a culvert put in, but something has to be done. We can't live like this. I can't look at the weather and wonder, oh, my gosh, do I need to stay up all night and then panic that I'm going to get flooded again? I just can't do it. And it's also come to my attention through some research of neighbors that the hospital has a pump that's pumping water into our backyards. That can't be right. The hospital can't be dumping water and causing our houses to flood. That, to me, is not, one, not ethical, and, two, I don't believe it's legal. You can't intentionally flood a neighbor's house. So I know you can't respond. I understand that.
If you leave your information, I'll respond to you.
Thank you.
And actually, there is some hope for you.
I hope so.
Mr. Woody McElroy.
Hello, my name is Woody McElroy. I used to work for the city of Southport, had to retire, the old disability. I'm the one that they're afraid I used to go clean that ditch out back there. Everybody's talking about it. We did it about twice a year. It don't take no time in there for you to do that ditch, probably about an hour and a half. And now y'all saying there, y'all don't do it no more. I just wanted to know why.
Sir, in public comment, we don't go back and forth. Certainly ask all the questions you want. Make sure the clerk knows how to contact you, and you'll get answers to your questions.
Okay.
Okay.
But I used to live at 614 Fodel. Why did?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Ms. Mary McJean. McLean? I've got it wrong all the way.
I'm Mary McLean. I live at 612 North Fodel Avenue. My house doesn't flood, my yard does. I'm here today to act as a proxy for several of my neighbors who can't be here today and to tell you their story. It isn't just a matter of the backyard flooding. These are people who've come here and put everything they have into buying a home on Fodel Avenue. And even when no-name storms come, they have to go in and carry everything in their house out to the yard because it's flooded. They're losing, one neighbor who asked me to speak for her today, I know that she came here from Robinson County, took the money that she got from her family land and bought a house in Southport in short order. It flooded multiple times, not just during hurricanes. So the long story is, the short story of a long story is, from the hospital all the way down Fodel to Memory Lane and across Memory Lane, I know of at least eight houses that have flooded inside. One of my neighbors, who's 87 years old and has lived here and worked here all his life, told me that his home has flooded at least twice. And last evening, he pointed out to me, he said, right across the street from me, between those two houses, is where it stops. That's where the water stops running. And I respect him because he's been here a long time, and he's a smart guy, and he's an honest guy. And when I asked him to come today, he'd already had a prior commitment, but he said, Mary, you're wasting your time, and this is what he said, because this town doesn't care anymore. In 1979, when James Conauton wrote a letter to the State Port pilot and came to the town, and he said, "I'm sorry to say, but my backyard is flooding," the town acted. They came onto private property and dug a ditch. When they dug that ditch, does it not imply that they have a responsibility of care for the ditch that they dug? If the ditch wasn't there, the water that came from the hospital, it could go all over. It could go somewhere else. So I think there is a responsibility to these people who could be losing everything, and what more can you say? The other thing that I do think about is, with all this flooding, you're creating a group of people who are absolutely desperate. You don't want to do that. They will do something. They will try to protect their property. Could you blame them? I wouldn't. And the other thing is, what is their recourse? What can they do? Well, let's see. They could take that ditch and fill it back up and send the water back where it comes from. That would be one thing to do. And the other thing they could do is go to the media, and they could let every newspaper, every print, from Calabash to Hampstead, know that this town of Southport, this happiest town in America, happiest seaside town, will also deliver the sea right into your living room and around your mattress when you wake up in the morning. That wouldn't be very good press for this town, would it? It wouldn't look good for development. And there we've got over 100 houses being constructed across from Northwood Cemetery. That's a lot of concrete and asphalt that's already put down. And my 88-year-old neighbor also said, Mary, it's only going to get worse. So I plead with you today to take some ethical action. I think it would be very simple to see where the blockages are on that ditch. That would be a nice, simple thing to do. And the other thing might be to go back to the source and see where the water's coming from and see if it could be diverted. I do remember that a great deal of work has been done underneath Atlantic Avenue and the hospital and two nursing homes. I would think their water could easily be diverted down Atlantic through that nice culvert system that's underneath the street. Thank you for letting us complain today. I hope you'll take us seriously.
Ms. Katie Ward.
My name's Katie Ward. I live at 613 North Fodel Avenue. Recently, we've had a lot of flooding. Tuesday night, we almost lost our house again. I've lived through two floods in that house, wondering Florence and wondering the last cyclone. That is the scariest feeling you've ever had. And again, almost lost it Tuesday night. I had to take off work Wednesday, couldn't even go into work just to clean the bottom of my house out, which we lost our air conditioning system once again. In 2018, Florence hit, and we knew we had a problem. The city of Southport said it wasn't their problem with the ditch. 2019, they decided to dig another culvert and redo the ditch. We have pictures of them going through our backyard. Didn't even tell us, didn't even tell my uncle Woody. He just did it, and that was perfectly fine. We had no problem. We were happy that they were actually doing something, and we thought this would clear the problem out. Once they dug the hole and they put the pipe in the ground, they pretty much said, it's your problem now. Ever since I was little, I've seen my uncle clean that ditch out. I've seen him clean out several ditches. I've seen him clean out several ditches around Southport. Never complained any. When he retired, no one else even touched the ditch. That's what caused the flooding. Something needs to be done. That ditch, when they dug it during Florence, it was every bit of four or five feet deep. It helped. But in the past years, it's just, it's been filled up and filled up and filled up. We don't have the means to do this by ourselves. We don't have the equipment. And there's not one person that is on that ditch line that will not agree that it needs to be fixed. It needs to be dug out every single year. It has been done so for the past twenty-something years since my uncle has worked for the city of Southport, that it has been done. I wanna know why it's not being done now. Why is it our problem? Because in nineteen seventy, city of Southport deemed that land buildable, that it was okay to build on that land, that the water levels and so forth, were not going to destroy anything on that property. In nineteen seventy-three is when the first flood happened. Ms. Conotan, which is not nineteen seventy-nine, it's nineteen seventy-three is when she first wrote the first letter. It flooded. It flooded the land. They were supposed to do something. And since then, she wrote in the paper and she got something done. After that, they dug the ditch out for years and years and years and years since then. And now, in the past ten years, they say it's now our problem. I don't see how that's right. One, again, we don't have the means to do it ourselves. You have a lot of elderly people in that neighborhood that don't have the, the know-how or, like I said, the means to do it. And not only that, everyone on Fodell and Cape Harbor, you can look at that and every other house is for sale. You wanna know why? Because the city of Southport is not doing anything to help the floodwaters. I understand now that we're doing some kind of, uh, experiment with the, with the floodwaters. But that ditch is our number one problem. It needs to be fixed. And I understand that this is a, a year project that we're doing. But we need relief now because again, a little rainstorm almost took us out. It almost ruined everything again. I'm still in a halfway house. My house is not done at all. It, it's, it's almost destroyed. I've got three rooms that we can be in. And that's it, because I still didn't have the money or the funds, neither did anyone else, to rebuild their house. A lot of us didn't have flood insurance. A lot of us can't get flood insurance because we can't afford it. I just don't see how it's our problem cleaning the ditch out. When for so many years, the city of Southport took that on. And now it's our problem. So, said my piece.
Mr. Ed Long.
Morning. For the ones who don't know me, my name is Ed Long. I'm retired, thirty-one years of law enforcement in this county. The most of it was in Southport. And believe me, I appear familiar with that ditch. I bought a house in the early eighties. And it was good for a while. When my house flooded the first time, I found out the reason. When the houses was built, the ditch was turned, running to Bonnie Creek. And the reasoning was it was the good old boy thing back then. And that's the way it was. Where the ditch was never hardly cleaned out. And when I was younger, I would hire people to help me clean that, my area. Well, I tried and I tried to get the city to help me. Nobody would have helped me. And this started in seventy-one, mind you. But the link, my house weren't even built yet. My house was built, started in seventy-nine and was completed in nineteen eighty. But I'm not the first owner. Owner had it. I guess they had a problem, I didn't know about it. And I bought the problem and the house. Well, back to the ditch. Used to, the town would get inmates, O twenty-five prison unit in Wilmington. They would come over, they would clean the ditch out. Actually, some of these guys was very talented. They know water does not run uphill. And that's, that's a good thing. Because by going in there the last couple of times they did, they went in there with rakes and raked it out. And then they made the sides purty, but purty don't get it. I don't care how ugly it is, as long as it works. But that's still the biggest problem. I've spent thousands and thousands of dollars. Two new refrigerators, ever appliance you can have in a house, my air conditioner, heat. You know what they cost, I'm for sure. Um, dishwasher, uh, just ever appliance was gone. And so my savings is to the point that I don't have any. So it's time to do something or move forward in a different direction. And I know y'all know what I mean. So I just wanna know if the city is gonna try to do something. I was told, I was told by this man right here by the mayor. But it hasn't happened. So I just wanna know what we gonna do? And then I'll know what I need to do as an individual. If anybody else is gonna do anything, that's up to them. But I know what I'm gonna do. I can't keep living like this. And all the water that comes from the hospital complex, home, all that comes down there. And that's not a problem. It used not to be really a problem. But, but understand, we have more water coming in. It's like that last time, that little bit of rain we had. It had flooded my, uh, sunroom. Thank God it didn't get away in my house. But three times before, I lost all, most of all my, my advanced certification. I had stuff in there and all of it got damaged. I lost so much that means a lot besides everything else you can think of, but my butt. My wife's not happy. I'm not happy. And I know a lot of other people's not happy. And I love Southport, but I don't like the way it is now. The administration has got to do something. Now, I've been here a long time. I started in Sheriff's Department in the early seventies. And I've give my life to law enforcement, to this county. And I don't seem to get anything back. And I've give this town a lot. I had two businesses here for eighteen years. At a computer company and the biggest video store that's ever been known of, right here in Southport. Club, which is where the realty company is up there on House Street. But I'm not complaining about that. So, would anybody like to ask me a question?
Sure. I know how to get in touch with you. I'll follow up with you, okay?
Okay. But I've got it all here since nineteen seventy-one. I've got all the paperwork.
Okay.
I have an email that was sent in this morning. Um, from Tammy Saxton. Dear city of Southport and board of Alderman. I am writing this letter because I could not attend today's meeting due to work. I live at six oh seven North Fodell Avenue. This has been my home since October twenty nineteen. The drainage ditch runs behind my house. Back in twenty twenty, I had some concerns about the ditch. Mayor Hayden visited me and the ditch was cleared out after his visit. That was the only time since I have lived here that the ditch has been cleared. When the no name storm hit on September sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, my home flooded. I reached out to one of the aldermen about my situation. Mark Spencer came by my home and basically told me that there was nothing that could be done. He told me that fixing the ditch problem for the homes on North Fodell would just cause the problem to be moved to another area such as his home. Of course, I did not like this answer. He then told me I could easily sell my home. I did not wish to sell my home. It is my home. I had also asked for a dumpster to be placed somewhere along our street for those of us who were flooded to have a place to deposit the debris and damaged household items. That was also a no. One would think that the city would want to help homeowners who pay taxes clean up after natural disasters by making it a little easier by placing a dumpster on the street for cleanup purposes. I guess this idea was too much to ask. If, if, if it was just my own debris that I was having to clean up, I could understand. However, I had debris from all surrounding homes in my yard. It was frustrating. I am still dealing with aftermath from the storm. I thought that for sure, that the ditch would be cleared out after the no name storm. But no, it was not. All the debris from the no name storm was, has been sitting in that ditch all this time. One would think that during the winter months would have been a great time to work on the ditch. We must prepare for the hurricane season, right? On May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, a smaller storm occurred with about seven inches of rain and all my yard flooded again. Not as bad, but bad enough. Water accumulated in my yard and under my home. There was so much debris that washed out from the ditch into my backyard. I also had debris from neighboring homes in my yard as well. I do wonder how much of that was debris left from the no name storm. I realize that flooding is a big possibility living in Southport. I also feel that there are ways to prepare and maintain the utilities that we have to make life run more smoothly. I truly feel that if the ditch is properly maintained, the problem would not be as bad. Slapping a Band-Aid on it would not fix the situation. I know that with all the new developments occurring around us, the problem is getting worse as well. I do not know the solutions, but I know that there is a big problem with a drainage ditch that does not drain properly. I do have photos of no name storm damages as well as May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, if anyone would like to see. Thank you for listening and I hope some solutions can be found. Tammy Saxton, six oh seven North Fodell Avenue. And I have one more. This is from Up Your Arts. Mayor Rich Alt and Board of Aldermen. Dear Mayor Alt and Board of Aldermen. I wanted to thank you and Southport city staff for partnering with Up Your Arts to put on what was a very successful plain air festival on May first, second, and third. We had over seventy-five participating artists and around three hundred patrons visiting our festival ending wet paint sale on Saturday, May third. During the day, the park was also filled with children and adults enjoying the kids playing art, plain air, art demonstrations, music and food truck. Franklin Square Park is the perfect venue for our annual festival and we appreciate allowing us to continue to use it. It provides the space we need, the stage for music and announcements, some shade for our artists and demonstrators, nearby restrooms and adequate closed parking. I also want to provide specific thanks and acknowledgement for several of your city staff. Heather Hemp Hill and her staff at Parks and Recreation are excellent partners and helped us strategize our options as we awaited the final decisions on the use of the park. And then help with festival layout options to help us, to help keep us compliant with the new park use rules. Elena Dale Taylor at Community Relations was instrumental in setting up online registrations and getting the word out. Tom Stanley and his Public Works team provided cones and hung our banner over House Street. Chief Corrings' assigned officer Katie Ward was very helpful and supportive on festival day. Thanks again for all the city support. We look forward to our continuing partnership for years to come. Sincerely, Martin Marty Doorward, Plain Air Festival Chair and Up Your Arts Board Member. And that is all.
Okay. I, um, I'm gonna ask the indulgence of the board for a moment to expand on the biggest topic we've had today.
I wanted to see if we could add it to the agenda as, as number one. An update on our flooding in Fodell and where we are.
Good deal. There's a motion and a second to add it to the agenda. Is, and is, is there any discussion on it?
I'm sorry, what's the motion?
The motion is to add a new agenda item. When we get to the, we get to the point where it says E. We're, um, which is where we're gonna go next, is to add an agenda item to have an update on the, uh, stormwater issues. Because there's, there's a lot of, for everybody here, when, we're involved in this every day. So we're, we're really aware of what's going on. And the hard part is getting communications out to all of you of what the city is doing. I think there's a great opportunity to have that conversation and have the manager lead that, that conversation. So, um, I'm gonna ask for a motion to close public comment.
I'm moving.
Yes, we are. Yeah, yeah. All in favor of, uh, closing public comment? Any opposed? The next topic on the thing is the, um, the approval of the agenda. And there's been a motion on the floor now to add an agenda item. And there's been a second to that. Is there any discussion on that topic?
Do we have time to get one of our engineers here to have, to participate in the conversation?
Well, we can, we can try to do that, but I think we, if we can do that, that'd be great, but I think there's enough.
It just would add some value, baby.
We have enough information amongst ourselves to talk about that, that stuff. Um, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? So we'll add an agenda item to, uh, the, uh, let's make it, uh, item number two. So we can get the parking thing done and out. That's okay? Or do you wanna do a one? Make it one or two?
Should make it one.
Alright, let's make, alright, let's make it one. We're gonna, we're gonna add it to agenda item number one. Alright, so is, um, nah, yes ma'am, I do know that. Now I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor? Any opposed? The next is, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
The motion and a second, is there any conversation? Not hearing, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? It's unanimous. Uh, the next thing is the special resignation, recognition, I'm sorry. For Dozier Hospital. And I'm going to ask for the Dozier Hospital peoples to meet me at the podium over here. Okay. This is a, uh, the city of, I'm sorry, the city of Southport Board of Aldermen. And the ninety-five years of trusted care Dozier Hospital has played in Southport. And so it is my pleasure to represent the board in this proclamation. Whereas J. Arthur Dozier Hospital has been meeting the healthcare needs of Southport and the surrounding communities since its founding in June, on June second, nineteen thirty. And this year proudly celebrates its ninety-fifth anniversary of service and care. And whereas the hospital was established as a tribute to Dr. Julius Arthur Dozier, whose commitment to public health inspired his creation as the first hospital in Brunswick County. It remains a lasting symbol of his vision and dedication. And whereas this, the Board of Trustees, staff and volunteers at J. Arthur Dozier Hospital have consistently built upon the legacy of the hospital's founder, ensuring comprehensive, compassionate and extraordinary care for ninety-five years. And whereas J. Arthur Dozier Memorial Hospital has shown its commitment to patients to, through additions of cardiac rehabilitation, primary care, women's health services, the wound care center, therapy services and comprehensive orthopedic care. And whereas J. Arthur Memorial Hospital continues to demonstrate its, its investment in healthcare and the community through its construction of a new emergency department facilitated, facility, facility, I'm sorry, along with several clinic and department renovations under phase one of its master facility plan. And whereas And whereas J. Arthur Dozier Hospital began serving the citizens of Brunswick County in the early nineteen thirties with just two physicians and five support personnel. And today it has grown to include more than five hundred physicians, staff members, and volunteers. And whereas dedicated to providing advanced state-of-the-art medical care and surgical services throughout its growth and evolution, Dozier has remained committed to delivering high-quality compassionate care, a tradition that continues to be the cornerstone of its mission. And now therefore I, Rich Alt, Mayor of Southport, do hereby proclaim June 2nd, 2025, ninety as ninety-five years of trusted care Dozier Memorial Hospital Day in the City of Southport and encourage all citizens to join in honoring the hospital's outstanding legacy and service, dedication, and trusted care to this community the second day of June, 2025.
I'd just like to make a brief comment to the Board of Aldermen and to the community that's present. Thank you for, first of all, this special proclamation. This is very important to Dozier Hospital, especially since just this year. As of May fourteenth, sixteen hospitals have closed. And we're very fortunate to have Dozier Hospital in this community. And we're here not only to provide care, but to also look out for our community. And I would just like to make a comment that we do not pump water into people's yards. Our water goes into the sewer system, so we would never ever do anything to hurt our community. We are here to help. And so again, thank you, thank you, thank you for this resolution or this proclamation. I would also invite you on June 7th to our community cookout. It's open to the entire community. Please join us for what I call our chew and chat, an opportunity to meet your neighbors, talk with your neighbors, and communicate about how we can continue to work together to make sure that healthcare remains accessible in our community. Thank you.
Okay, so we are now at agenda item number one, which is the new agenda item, which has to do with an update on where the city is on the various stormwater projects. Mr. Manager, are you ready to go, sir?
Yes, sir. So we have several different tracks we're pursuing to fix these issues. So number one, we have ordinance changes that requires this board's action. So we are in the process of updating our UDO. So that's going to the planning board this coming month to have them review those ordinances and bring that to the Board of Aldermen for any fixes we can do to permability in the soil, any building regulations we can update from that standpoint. Secondly, we're pursuing grants through the state and federal government to get us the funding we need to be able to update our entire stormwater system. We've also had a strategic study done throughout the entire stormwater system to say where are our choke points at? Where are the biggest and critical areas, which of course Fodell and as y'all say, y'all's area is one of those greatest points. So we're pursuing those grants that that will be coming down the line here in the next few months. In that same line, we're also pursuing city funding. So we're not waiting on the grants, we're pursuing and appropriating city dollars to continue to update our stormwater system through the work that we can do from our public works standpoint. And then looking at how can we administratively through my actions and then bring to the board ordinance change, how can we then create a policy to work? Look at what has been done in the past and how can we fix those issues going forward with correcting those past issues? And also looking at how we can go back to what everyone was accustomed to through those changes and through those cleaning out of those ditches and areas so that we have the flow that's needed. So there's a lot of different tracks we're going down to fix this issue. So you know, from my standpoint as manager, I want us to get a whole of whole of government stormwater system approach. We need a comprehensive plan to look at bringing these tracks together and how can we effectively together solve these issues that have been going on for a long time?
Go ahead.
As I understand it, when we were talking about cleaning out the ditch, we were running into issues about some homeowners not allowing us onto the property, if I remember correctly, because we don't have an easement in order to access those. Is that correct?
That's right. So then there's a separate issue we'd have to track along with those legal issues. So you know, certainly I think some folks will be allowance of those to allow us to come and do that. So I think we also have to pursue that from that standpoint and getting written permission from the owners, which I think we can do. And then there's also a next issue with some of the streets that are state roads. But then it would be a DOT thing, so we have to work in consort with our state representatives to make sure DOT is doing what they need to do from their standpoint within the state streets and the state roads. But yes, the legal issue is one of
So I just wanted that all of the folks on Fodell who are here and will go back and talk to their friends and family to know that we are actively pursuing a way to help them and that there are some neighbors who won't allow us onto the property to clean the ditches. So that it's an issue that we are working on and without the easements to be able to do that, we're kind of we're stuck for a little bit.
Y'all seem to be working well together and communicating. See if you can talk to your neighbors.
We're going to give you some more information first, okay?
And to follow up on what Rebecca said, that perhaps our city manager can reach out to Brady and look and see, just see if there are alternatives that we can pursue.
Brady is the city attorney.
Okay, I'm gonna I'm trying to lower my blood pressure.
Can I help you by saying that Mark Spencer's house floods every freaking time it rains here? So he is very sensitive to this issue.
Yes, I am so sorry. I understand what it's like to have water creep into your house and to not know which thing to grab first.
You had four feet. It's not creeping.
It is. Well, it's a ditch that was four foot at the ditch. It was an inch in my house and it came in and I built my house now to where PVC walls just I'm I love my house. I like that I have a home in Southport without having to lose my mother. I can live here at the same time with her. I'm very thankful. I'll take anything I've got. Because it's home. So I've flooded three times. In two hours, the water came into my house. So so that that is that. I'm okay. God is good to me. On Fodell, I have spoken with many of you, Mr. Long, I've come sat with you many times and never, ever, ever has my mouth said, there's nothing can be done. Bullshit. I've never, ever, ever said there's nothing can be done. Now, I don't think going to that ditch and putting a pipe there and a drain is going to get more water away. So I have said, let's go along the road and build a new drain, duplicity, not one, but two. Catch that water and let the ditch do what it does. That's why I'm not cleaning out the ditch right this second. Now, Ms. Sexton, who put my name in that email, I would never say this. I would never talk about this. But I didn't go to Ms. Sexton's house as an alderman. I took my lawnmower in her yard while she was away for a thirty-day visit somewhere because she needed help. And I cleaned her yard and I maintained it until she got back. And she was struggling and asking me what to do, never once said, you can't do this. And I don't appreciate her saying that in an email that was read in public after I went and have always been available. Not only did I cut her grass, but then I fixed her lawnmower so she could cut her grass. Ms. Mary McLean's across the street and she knows this. And I'm disappointed in Tammy Sexton writing that. I know I'm a politician and I should take that. But when you're out there helping people and they turn on you because they don't get what they want? Really? Yeah, I'm tired of Southport too in certain ways, but I ain't going nowhere. So I am really interested next Thursday, a week from Thursday, I'm sponsoring something to try to make sure that we start with the the beginning, which is the Bonnet's Creek. And I had a video that I posted to for the aldermen to see and one side, the Bonnet's Creek inland is full and three-foot lower water level is spitting out like a pressure washer. There's pipes running through the middle of drain lines. So when y'all fix your water, it's going to come to our neighborhood worse. There are other people that are are involved in this. There are other emails that haven't been read yet. So next Thursday night, a week from Thursday, the 12th, we'll be discussing it. It's probably the most important thing that I see in Southport right now. There are two things, a way to make money and a way to fix things. And you need money to fix things. So I do not appreciate Ms. Tammy Sexton for misrepresenting my help to her. It was a mixture of real estate, trying to help someone get out of trouble and not trying to say, I'm not going to help you. You need to sell your house. That is not Mark Spencer. Anybody knows me, would know better. So I had to clear that up. And otherwise, it is the most important thing we need to do. We got to find some money and we got to fix it. Being from here, yeah, I don't like the new development, but it is clear sitting in this seat for two terms that we don't have the right economic situation set up to where we can pay the bills. We can't pay for these drains. We're beggars. We're going to Charlie and Dr. Bill and saying, please bring some money up. Or we have a federal disaster. That's the only way we get money. We don't generate it. We give it away for free. So I'm struggling. I am here with you. I will. I will do whatever I can for your drainage issue. I know what it feels like to throw away my father's Bible. I know what it's like. And I can do that. I can do that because I still got Southport. I still got my life. I can make something new. I apologize for y'all struggling. It is personal to me. Thank you.
There's two things I want to clear up. One is the hospital squirting water into the streets. It's not what could be confusing is there's a building across the street from the hospital, Liberty Landing, which is not part of the hospital. And they have had flooding inside that building. And during the infamous Tropical Storm Eight, they had so much flooding that it was going to require the evacuation of the building. And as Chief Drew knows, that could not be done when it should have been done because we were an island. We couldn't move anybody. And moving people out of a rehabilitation or place like that is very risky health-wise. So once the road got opened up, then the county came in and we they evacuated the people. They do have a pump and it does pump water. And they have done extensive renovation of the building after September 16th. And we actually checked on them during the storm this past week. And I talked to them subsequent to that and they had a very little amount of water. Long term for that is that their pipe and their pump will be connected into the new storm system on Fodell, which is the first one up for the brick grant. Am I am I correct on that? The other part is the ditch. So we can clean out the ditch potentially with the okay with the people that are there. But if you've walked the ditch and Mr. Long and I have walked that ditch together. If you go, I want to say two houses down, maybe three, as you go towards the water, go southbound. Back in the good old days, either by express or or a tacit agreement, someone allowed two homeowners to connect to their houses with a crossover over the middle of the ditch. It's blocked. It has a culvert about that big. Clearly not big enough to take all the water on that ditch. And so I've stood there with Mr. Long and looked at that and just shook my head. How did that happen in the past? But this had nothing to do with this board. So if the ditch is going to be the partial answer, if it's going to be the partial answer, that's going to have to be all torn out because the water's just going to back up. We can clean out from that blockage up towards Fodell. But all of you that are on Fodell are not going to be helped by that because it's going to stop at that blockage there. And that's going to take some time and energy and cranes to knock that all down. And so there's a lot of legal things that have to happen. And the manager is taking all of that, taking all this information in. He'll be writing up a report for us, trying to figure out how we go forward with it. But please remember that this board, all six aldermen are all working diligently with the city staff to try to fix this issue. This is decades in the making, millions of dollars in the fixing. And we're moving forward. We got. We got a brick grant already that I don't think we're going to get till October, right? October, you gotta wait for the money. There was seven, one point five billion dollars by federal money was given to this part of the country for the Tropical Storm Eight. We all put in our dibs, what we wanted, which only came out to approximately seven hundred and fifty million dollars. That means the seven hundred and fifty million dollars unencumbered. So we're going back again to look at that. As we sit here, the engineer is writing up a proposal to get to attempt to get more grant money based on the recurring flooding that happens not just on Fodell, not just on Stewart, but all over the city that's flooding. But you have to start somewhere. So we mapped it out. That was a year in the making. This board, this board.
And it's we didn't map it. We hired an engineering company.
We hired an engineering company to map it out because you can't ask for grants until you have a plan. And so we had to go through these steps and they take a while to do that. So last year was the mapping process and the board was advised of that. Then then we could apply for grants and the manager is working on that. Some of that has already been in the works. More of that is coming. It just takes a ton of money. So we need to work with the people who live along the ditch. We have to figure out how we break that blockage out of the way because it will not get to where it's supposed to go until we have that done. I'm sorry, before we we go on to the next topic, is there anybody else who wants to speak on this? I apologize if I took the mic.
I have heard since Hurricane Matthew that one of the problems with flooding on Fodell was private owners were not allowing the city to come onto their property to clear out the ditches. And I don't know the addresses, but this has been brought to the board's attention for a very, very long time.
All right. I'm sorry, if there's no other comment, I hope this gives you food for thought that we actually are not just sitting here with stone faces looking at you. But no, I'm sorry, sir, but we do not get if you want a if you have a question, if you would give your information. We're we're going to work on that, sir. The manager has taken this as a as a thing to go look into. And I can tell you that this manager will look into it. With that, I'm going to move on to agenda item number two now, which is a presentation by Auto Connect for the parking management issue. And for the board, I've spoken to Jim, there's Jim, right? I spoke into Jim prior to the meeting and I told him to assume that we've read the documents in our package. So we don't So we don't need to have 57 pages read to us, but to give us the Reader's Digest version.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, word members. Thank you, community. Those of you that are here. This is an unusual situation for me. Usually when parking comes on the agenda, all of the public comments are about parking. So, you know, while I sympathize with the town and the stormwater situation, this is very unique for me. My name is Jim Varner. I'm the president and CEO of Auto Connect. With me today, I have two of my team members. Alyssa Irons is here is my VP of Operations. Companywide, she takes care of parking services, customer support and marketing and working with the communities and the various stakeholders in the communities for support. Also with me is our Director of Parking Operations for Brunswick County is Dale Lyon. So please stop me at any point if you have any questions. I do start with a disclaimer. This is an overview and assessment of paid parking that we have done for the city of Southport. I'm not in charge of implementing. The town has to say, let's go. Uh, we can provide a range of services from consulting all the way through support to procure signs, whatever we need to do. Uh, so in the interest of keeping with the mayor's comment, let me jump right into the topics that I'll be covering is the introduction of our Surfcast by Auto. It's our parking management services. It is a software-based solution that we'll talk through. I'll go through the basic details for implementation. Some parking areas that we've observed for consideration for paid parking, what are the costs are? And then the actions required for implementation. Surfcast is a mobile app and web-based solution. We use cell phones, cloud services to implement paid parking from both a permit standpoint and from a parking citation management standpoint. We do not support meters or kiosks. Almost all of our customers are in a coastal environment where the salt air corrodes those things and they break. They fail. And if that's not enough, people like to vandalize them. So we just don't do it. We do everything via phone. Smartphone via the app. Uh, and if people are not adept of using a smartphone, we have a phone number on all of our signs. You can call up our service and we can get a real person talking to you anytime. All of our permits are based on license plates. So when people set up a parking permit, uh, it's based on the car. Don't go changing cars and assume that you've got a permit for it because it's only that car that's got a permit. Access to our system is all kinds of options. Mobile app can download for an Apple or an Android device. We have a QR code on our signs that give you a link or you can dial directly into our website. Both our app and the website are identical from a capability standpoint. We have a phone number. We live in southeast North Carolina and our demographics are such that not everybody is adept at using a smartphone. Not everybody knows how to download an app. We recognize that. So we have real people locally and some remote that will answer the phone and arrange for a parking permit, resident permit, or pay a citation, whatever needs to be done. We also have parking attendants to rotate through the town. Whenever, you know, we're, we are contracted to do so and they can also help. Our goal very simply is to create value for the city. We want to make the parking management solution simple, easy to use for both customers and for the city staff. Excuse me. Residents. We offer a range of services for residents and it's up to the board how you want to do it. Uh, we have some of our towns provide one, two free permits for their vehicles to use within the parking area. Some towns, Oak Island, has a $10 per fee for vehicle fee for residents. Sunset Beach has $25 per vehicle for residents. Some towns like Ocean Isle have encumbrances caused by contracts with the Army Corps of Engineers. Residents have to pay exactly the same as a visitor. So their residents have to pay full price. Southport does not have those encumbrances at this point in time. Registration for residents is via an authorization code that we manage with the town staff. Typically that's either a utility account number or parcel ID. It allows them to register and set up their parking permits for their vehicles. That is all automated on our system. Once a permit is obtained, it's good for the duration. Typically it's the calendar year through the December 31st. If resident permits are free, we have also have a program where they are automatically renewed for the next year. If there's a fee associated with those, then the residents will have to re-register every year. And we do both. We support both. The resident application flow is pretty simple. Log into our app or our website to create a new account. Go through the creation of the account with an Surfcast ID, which is either an email or your phone number. That's important. That way you can get messages. Once you do that, set up your passwords. The next one is go through the residence setup, enter your authorization code, enter your license plates, hit done and you're done. It takes less than two minutes if you're prepared with all of your information. Your authorization code and your license plates. If there's a fee service, that would be one extra step. Then you have to have a credit card or debit card to pay a fee. The same thing applies.
I'm sorry. I didn't hear that last sentence. If you have what?
If you have, if the residents have a free permits, say for two vehicles. We have a service that we allowed all of those residents permits to renew automatically year to year. If you pay a fee, if you determine that residents pay a fee, $10, $20, $50, whatever per vehicle, then those residents will have to renew those permits on an annual basis. Because there's a fee associated with it annually. The visitor application flow is similar. Set it hourly, daily, whatever your permit duration is. Enter your license plate, enter your um, zone that you're in, which indicates the town, the city, uh, the area that you're in, put in your license plate, make your payment and you're done. We do offer things like, I think it's on the next page. For visitors, same situation, use the mobile app, QR code linked to the website, all via phone. Things that we recommend, uh, looking at parking rates. Looking at Brunswick County and competitive rates, $5 an hour is typical. All of the other towns that we have have primarily beach access parking. Uh, some towns have parking lots, parking areas, parallel parking in town. More aligned with what Southport has. They all have the same rate at $5 an hour. Some have a full day rate. Some have not a day rate because they want to facilitate the turnover for visitors. Southport falls into the latter category of probably more like a two or three hour permit limit. So that you can facilitate the turnover of visitors. You may want to consider a reduced fee, a discount fee for some areas of town. Go further up north out. Uh, that is outside the main shopping area and restaurant area. That may be a discounted $3 per hour rate. Again, up to you. These are just suggestions and ideas. A fair number of people from the surrounding area outside of Southport come to Southport all the time. You may want to consider a season permit for those people. Again, a competitive rate for Brunswick is $175 per season. That's within a calendar year, first year, maybe prorated, however you want to do it. Uh, the only exception right now for that permit is Oak Island, which recently raised their rate for season permit to $225. That is new for this year. Last year it was still 175. Payment options are credit and debit cards. Uh, we have looked at other options and continue to look at options. But those are the prevalent. We've looked at Apple Pay, Google Pay, Venmo, PayPal. Some of them work great. Some of them don't. Uh, we used to offer PayPal as a solution. We stopped it. It was a problem. So and we don't recommend that one. Where to park? There we go. The town is responsible for identifying where valid parking places are. If people aren't parked in a valid parking area, they're subject to a citation and we do this all the time. No parking except in designated parking spaces. Throughout the industry, the prevailing approach to paid parking is you either say you can park here or you can't park there. You don't do both. Sometimes do both, but you don't have to. If you say, this is where you can park and you can only park in a designated spot, that is sufficient according to the industry. We support it either way. Designated parking areas for the general public. Residents required to use those same spaces. Visitors have to have a valid permit. Any type of vehicle, including LSVs cards. And LSVs and cards can use a standard space. They are not restricted to using LSV only spaces. That's North Carolina law. Uh, and those cards do have to have a valid permit. Enforcement. Enforcement is via us checking the license plate. We can scan and we can manually enter them. We can do several ways of checking them. Using our cloud service, we know in an instant whether you've got a valid permit or not. Our enforcement personnel don't have start and stop times. It's either a valid permit or it's not. If it's not, they give a citation based on town ordinances. We do give 15 minute warning notices if you opt in for notification via the app through a text or an email, depending on how you set up your account. We also notify you again when your permit's done and give you an option to extend your permit. And then no parking violations or what we consider no zone violations, people parking opposing a ordinance. We do those as well. It doesn't have to be just the paid parking area. Typical ordinance violations that we can check for. And these are things that again are up to the board, whether you want us to enforce these or if you want your police force to continue to enforce these, things like parking within 40 feet of a street intersection, um, blocking a driveway or mailbox, sidewalk, crosswalk. One of my favorites, parking in a parallel spot opposing the direction of traffic. That's a huge safety problem that we run into and I'm personally involved in that one where somebody riding a bike like myself is going down the street and the car is pulling out into, into oncoming traffic. And we very sudden stop in the front end of a truck. So that one is near and dear to my heart. Uh, and coastal communities or areas where there are a lot of pedestrians, this becomes very important. Parking on any portion of the roadway. I see all the time coming down House Street. Trucks parked in the next, here's a white line and here's that nice parking area and there's curb. And their tires are out in the roadway. That's a parking violation, even if they had a permit. We do get involved in other areas, things like working in a handicap spot without a handicap hang tag or a license plate. That's a state statute, but if you put it in your ordinance, we can enforce it. Otherwise the police department has to enforce it. Same thing with parking within feet, 15 feet of fire hydrant, fire lane or emergency access. I say beach access because a lot of our towns have that. Typical citation fines. Uh, under North Carolina law, parking violations can have a maximum fine of $50 unless it is a handicap spot or emergency access. Because paid parking is still relatively new in southeast North Carolina, uh, we've offered a what we call same day violation discount to clear your citation. We typically do that if $25 or half the price. If they pay it same day, they got the citation by midnight. This has turned into a real fun topic because several of our competitors now offer this. We've offered this for six years. Uh, and we're seeing more and more companies start to offer this. Typically in the parking industry, the citation payment rate runs about 60, 65%. With this, we get over 80. So we clear out an awful lot of citations with this capability. Some towns also, also require a late payment fee if it's not paid within 30 days. Uh, some even within 10 days can do it. Typically it's within 30 days. And then there's a $250 fine for special violations in particular handicap space violation. Sign templates. This is our typical sign. Uh, we put town logo, pay to park, three ways to pay either via the mobile app, QR code or website or via phone. Zone numbers can be however we set up the town. And then the details of, is it seasonal? Is it all year round? Nine to five, eight to eight, whatever the board decides the period is for paid parking. Parking enforcement areas. I highlighted in the package two specific areas that we are very familiar with the downtown area that we would consider premium parking. Uh, and you may want to consider moving further out. Uh, Montal is a discounted parking area. Other areas of town may be resident only or can be other discounted parking areas as well. Again, up to your recommendations, your decisions and we can go from there. Costs for implementations. Costs for implementations. The cost of this town to implement paid parking is the cost of signs and implement and installation of those parking signs. I do not charge for setting up Surfcast or my system for the city of Southport. The signs that we procure twelve inch by eighteen inch is a standard street sign. They run about seventy-five dollars or sometimes we're able to get them for less. Typically, we try to get them for less. If you procure those signs through us, we transfer those costs to the city at cost. We do not mark them up. We do that as a service to the city. Installation, we assume that your town staff, Public Works Department, who knows the materials that you're putting it into can install those signs. We recommend one sign for every four spaces. Simply put, there's always a sign no more than a car away from where you're parking. Some of the areas may only have one space. Okay, you got to put a sign up there. Some areas have twelve spaces. Okay, you need three or four. And we can help with where signs should be located. Fees. We prefer a revenue sharing model. In fact, that's the only model that we really support. We avoid fixed costs. We don't charge extras. We don't invoice our costs back to the city. We just take a thirty-five percent write off of whatever we collect. And once a month, we send an ACH transfer to the city for sixty-five percent. Our fees range from anywhere from twenty to forty percent. Thirty-five percent is where we end up with a downtown area based on the cost of enforcement. Twenty percent, whoops, twenty percent on the low end. City does all the enforcement. The city handles all the citations and uses all that. Forty percent, we have one case where we do a little bit more for we have more people onboard manning a okay, a four by four drive on the beach parking lot. We actually man the gate. So thirty, thirty-five percent is typically where we are. With the downtown area was a something like a two hour parking limit. We know we have to be out there a little bit more often than we do if we're just doing a beach access. And we have to do a beach access twice a day, once in the morning, once in the afternoon. Downtowns, we have to do more often to keep up with the turnover of people. No fixed cost. Thirty-five percent is whatever it is. And we work within that limit and provide the services that we need. A lot of our towns really appreciate this kind of service. Once the parking is set up, it's pretty much hands off from a town standpoint. And they get a deposit in their account once a month with a detailed audible report of every transaction. Simple. We want to keep it really simple. Okay. Actions. If you want to proceed with a paid parking solution and if you look like us to be your vendor, first things first, you need to decide to say we're going to do paid parking. Second, approve a contract if it's not with me, with somebody else. Pick your dates and times of when you want paid parking. Or your rates and fines. Or the ordinance updates that you need to put in place. Set all the parking locations. That's it. What we have to do, work with you on the signage, human template. The street rates, locations set up. Decide if it's a pay to park area, a resident only area. Support all the excuse me, support all the documentation templates and help the town distribute that. We work with stakeholders. We provide public announcement support. We provide input to your website. We put all of your information on our website. And then finally, we set up our Surfcast system specifically for the city of Southport. We have, I think, six or seven cities on our system today. Add you right in. From the time of approval, it takes us about one to two months to get its system set up and running. Whether you want it set up by Labor Day or for next year, that is again up to you. We are here to serve you and react to whatever decisions you need. Questions?
Questions Frank? Do you have a question?
You've obviously run around, looked around town. How many approximately, how many spaces do you think that you'd have to designate as paid parking? Just I sure that's going to be a swag, but uh.
Our quick estimate was close to nine hundred.
Nine hundred.
And that's about, I would say that's about average for what we support in a city this size.
Did you have a question?
I've got five questions.
She's ready.
I am. What about visitors who are visiting residents? Let's say members of your family, friends come to stay for a week or so. Do you have a system for making it possible for those people to be able to drive their car into into town if they don't want to walk into town and not have to pay? I mean, they're good. Let's say they're going to be here for a week or so. I think we all have visitors at one time or another. So how do, how do we take care of them?
Being that they are not residents and don't have a resident permit and if they drive their vehicle, they're going to have to pay pay to park. Unless you make some other provision for extra resident permits or a discounted family resident permit. The problem with that is it tends to create some misbehavior. People that rent their homes want to create a free account for every renter that comes through every week. And that's not what you typically want to do. So generally, those people would have to pay. Or if they're coming and staying in my house, I tell them to take my car because it's free. Microphone?
Got it. What about businesses' employees? What, how, how do we ensure that the employees are not getting stuck with this big parking bill?
Can I, can I address that?
Please.
May I? So I think that one of the things that we need to think of as a board is that residents, business owners and their employees are free, period. And if we don't do that, I'm not going to support it.
So, 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 so let me expound on that a little bit. Every town is a little bit different, but most towns do have a provision for employee parking. Each business registers with us and they designate a person to communicate their employee tags to us. So it's not willy nilly. It's very specific and it's controlled. And then those employees do get either discount or free parking. And we do support that in most of our towns.
Mike here, there. The signs, the paid parking signs, are those going to be on poles?
Typically, yes.
Okay, so this would be poles that the city obtains and installs?
Yes.
Mike again.
I'm just going to leave it on, I think. I'm trying to get a mental handle, excuse me, on what the anticipated revenue for the city might be if we end up with nine hundred paid parking spaces. What ballpark, what are we looking at annually?
That's a very leading question. Generally, we have two different models. One for beach access parking that we usually tell boards to plan on about seven hundred and fifty dollars per space per season. And then we have downtown parking areas like Southport, which will be more applicable where you've got higher turnover and people to come pay to park two to three hours and may have paid parking year round. Then we tell them that they should expect probably north of a thousand dollars per space. So all told, with about nine hundred spaces, I would expect you to clear, and this is net to the town, not gross, net to the town, close to a million dollars a year. Now, I say that. I am very conservative when I talk to boards about what to expect. And we've been able to exceed that in every case. I've got one parking lot with twenty-seven spaces and it nets three thousand dollars per space per year. Huge turnover. I see the downtown parking area of Southport in the summer and the huge turnover on a daily basis. I see it even in the winter. Not quite as many people, but people come to eat, they come to shop. I would expect you to see at least a million dollars net per year, at least. And it would be significantly more.
My final question is, you said, I believe it was seven other cities that you service, is that correct?
Yes.
What are those cities?
Okay, starting up in on Topsail Island, I have North Topsail Beach. And I have Topsail Beach, the two ends of Topsail Island. Coming down through Brunswick County, I have Oak Island, Varnum Town, Holden Beach, Ocean Isle Beach, Sunset Beach. And I have one outlier. I have Beach Mountain over by Boone.
Say that again. I didn't catch that.
The last one. Beach Mountain. B E E C H Mountain Ski Slope. It's a ski resort area.
Can I borrow, can I borrow him for a second, Lou?
It's over, it's over, it's over between Boone and Asheville.
Can you, do you have any that have the significant, well, the majority of the, the parking in a downtown area, not a beach?
I have three towns that have a downtown parking area, but also have beach parking. Beach Mountain is only the downtown area, but it's not a shopping area like Southport. We have significant downtown parking area, parallel parking in Holden Beach. We've got it in Oak Island. I'm sorry?
Topsail has some commercial areas also with parking there.
Yeah, Topsail Beach does. We don't have Surf City where the majority of the commercial area is. So from that standpoint, yes and no, we don't have a real centralized shopping area like Southport has. We have something similar.
Okay, so this is sort of my baby. Or it's one of the options that I've seen to try to get us out of trouble. And I would go for more of a parking permit citywide. Every right of way, every piece of property that Southport owns will be regulated by a parking pass. That means that you have to have parking on your private property. If you want company to come, they have to park on your property. If you don't, if you own a business and you don't have a single parking space, why shouldn't you pay for the employees is my question. Why should we supplement the businesses and not make a dime? So my, 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 the model that I've sort of been working on in my head is a citywide per parking permit. And it would be regional where we would give BSL twenty-five hundred passes, St. James twenty-five hundred passes. We could revenue share that money. They could tie, they could buy in to supplying us with money. So we've got salespeople out there waiting. The churches are going to need passes. We can sell them in the churches for a discounted rate. But I'm looking at more of, I'm not interested in entertaining the tourist. I'll take their money. But I really, this is more for me about regulating who just parks. And I don't care about the turnover when they pay a two fifty to four hundred dollar a year permit to park anywhere they want, just like a citizen. If your car is registered in Southport, you pay tax in Southport, you're registered to vote in Southport, you should get a free pass automatic, no sign up. There's a list of those, those tags. We could get a spreadsheet of the tags of everybody that pays for a city tax. Free, never encumbered, it never prevented from anything. Free if it's available. Signs up, come into town. If you don't have a permit, you're going to get a ticket if you're not on private property. It will drive the businesses to invest in parking lots. At this moment, you don't need to invest in a parking lot because we give it away for free. Provision in those groups, they bought that parking lot to try to make money, but they realize if they charge, people would go park on ours for free. So parking lots are worthless, no value. We need to change that model because we made it free. So business employees would pay a discounted rate so that their employees' tag would be in the system. Have you ever used cameras to identify, not just your mobile camera, but camera up on a pole to determine whether a parking person is legal or not? Do you use any AI automation for your business?
We've looked at it because of the turnover and the cost to implement that. We have not done it because those systems are relatively expensive.
There's truly a program out there for free that will let you load it onto a Raspberry Pi and identify a license tag. It's open source, free software that will read a license tag, right?
There is.
It's Python script.
And, and one of the one of the concerns that I've got relative to residents is some parts of the city, the residents have to park in the right of way because there is no private property available for them to park. So I have seen, you know, we know that. And those are areas that if a resident is parking in the right of way, it suddenly gives anybody else permission to park in the right of way. So your point about making the entire town pay to park is valid. And those residents that have to park their cars in the right of way just need a permit.
Be in the system and be, and not ever talk. Be in the system and be, and not ever talk to about their.
And it, it just implies that we will need to enforce every street. And we have no problem with that, that is part of our service offering, we can do that.
And you could enforce as much as you want to enforce. The knowledge that it's there can enforce enough.
Yeah, and, and it's, the downtown area, we would want to enforce that at least four times a day. The rest of the town? Maybe once or twice, not, it's not as critical. And then there's fun days like the Fourth of July. Guess what? We don't want to be here. Make it a free parking day. Because people will park wherever they can find ten feet of space, they'll park there. So, special events, we, we do special things for those.
You're indicating that the city should be able to gross that whatever, a million dollars a year. What's going into your pocket? A third?
A third? About three hundred thousand. Yeah, it really doesn't go into my pocket, it goes into paying all those people that are out there, goes to pay for the people on the phones.
It's still going into your pocket, it's going into your company's pocket.
Yeah, and, and a lot of parking services use a third-party vendor to develop their system. We don't. We wrote the code. We manage the system, we manage the citations. We forward citations to a collection agency if they aren't paid. This is our system. We've got the software developers that put this together. And we've been working together for over twenty years. We've got, I know you've read some of our background, but we've been doing this for a long time for IBM, for Security First. We've provided government agencies with data security solutions. We know how to do this very, very well.
Alderman Kelly?
Couple of things. So, I would really like to know how many parking spaces not, we have, we think it's nine hundred. Along Howe Street, there aren't markers in between what would be considered parking spaces. We just have the one white line that runs down each side of Howe Street. Looking at signs along our waterfront, every thirty feet or so is not, does not bring me joy. Now, a million dollars a year, great, that's fantastic, I love that idea. But the other thing is, our golf carts aren't required to have tags in Southport. They're registered to City of Southport, and there are no tags on them for the most part. So how do we capture those if we're gonna go forward with this?
If they're registered to the City of Southport, what identification is on those?
There's a sticker.
There's a sticker?
It's not, it's not well done. It's not like Bald Head where you actually have a number that's dedicated to you. I would like us to change that and copy what they're doing across the room.
I, I would say either what they're doing at Bald Head or what they do in Oak Island, where they have, they have accessible carts with a triangle and a police sticker with a number on it so that there's always a reference number, we know who owns that cart. So that if there is a problem, we can cite it and at least work with the police department to find the owner.
The motivation of this is to not charge our residents anything to make the people on the outside that come here every day pay the bill.
But there is an issue, there is a qualifier. If a resident parks up against a stop sign, they're gonna get a ticket. If they park opposing traffic, they should get a ticket. So, it's free if they park in a designated parking spot. Now, to Alderman Kelly's point. You know, before, you know, if you decide on paid parking and if you select us to be your vendor, we're, we're gonna go out along Howe Street and measure every one of those white lines for how many spaces are here before we implement paid parking. So that's part of our process, we would have to do that.
I would, I would need that information to decide how much money we could potentially earn in this because I, I have a hard time with paid parking to begin with. I don't think that it's the right choice for Southport. I think we're trying to welcome people here. We have other options on the table to look at for revenue at this time that we're still waiting to push through the state. So, I, I, I'm, show me the money.
So, there, there was a parking study done that said within four, I think it was four blocks of the waterfront, we have nine, over nine hundred parking. So we have done the study, we don't need, need him to go back through that process.
Yeah, I think that was part of the Walker study.
So, ten thousand passes at two hundred and fifty dollars a pass. There are ten thousand residents in St. James. There are ten thousand in BSL, there are ten thousand in Oak Island, they come here daily. Which one of them will, which one of them will pay? Two hundred and fifty dollars a piece, ten thousand, what's that, two-point-five million dollars?
So, just to address, and my, my logic or my thinking, which may be wrong with regards to business owners is, you know, in most cases, they're paying ad valorem tax if they own their building and they're paying sales, or other people are paying sales tax, right? So there's, we're getting value from those being here, otherwise. And they're getting value too for being in Southport, frankly. So, I mean, it can, it can go either way, but I understand why you would say that.
But Robert and Mark, and you remember when Southport downtown was nothing?
Yeah, sure.
So let's not scare those businesses and business owners away.
It was a nice time. We didn't have traffic, we didn't wear down our roads, we were paying our bills. I don't, I don't, that was, that was the way it was, we were under control. St. James has taught us a lot. Put up a fence, prevent people from coming, collect more tax. I hate to say that, but St. James has taught me a lesson. Shut it down, protect the people who pay the bills. Another problem we have is we have people who take their property and they build on every inch of it, and then they don't have parking. Where's that, where does that stand? Where is that in terms of accountability? Let's ride the city's free parking. I have, I park in the right-of-way, the gentleman's right, I park in the right-of-way. I'm looking at trying to make a U-shaped driveway on my property so that I literally am on my property and not in the right-of-way. But we made rules to prevent that too. Okay, so, I don't know what to do. But, yes, I'm, I'm, I park on the right-of-way and I pay the tax. My tags are registered in Southport, I vote in Southport. Things that are really rare these days, people that pay the tax in Southport, that vote in Southport with the million-dollar homes with no parking spot. That don't live here, okay, that's what we've become. So, I'm ready to slow down and share it with my neighbors with a parking permit citywide. When you go to visit someone's house, if you're parking on their private property, no one will say anything to you. That will mean that you will have to have parking on your properties. It will make people do things, businesses will have to invest in parking. And the ones that have it, their customers won't have to pay.
Can I ask another question?
Could Alderman Masala go first because she's been waiting?
Okay.
So, I, I have, I have a lot of consternation. The parking study, when the parking study was presented to us, I believe that the consultant said that we weren't ready for paid parking, which, if he were here, I would ask him to elaborate on that more now that we're in this conversation. I struggle with two hundred and fifty signs in our little historic downtown where we have tried to control sign pollution. To me, this is troubling. The idea, and I understand what Mark's saying about private property and stuff, but the section of Old Town that I live in, these houses were built, you know, hundred and X years ago, and they're literally, they're, they have no property. So they're parking the right-of-way, and so then they have guests that are coming for the week, family guests. So now, how are we gonna accommodate those people? I just think that we have, there's a lot of conversation, and I appreciate this presentation, and I think you've helped us ask a lot of these questions. I think the, the question of day trippers and how do we manage those people? So, I, I just think there, there's a lot here to unpack, and I appreciate you being here, but just as a, as a proposal, I would struggle with this for these reasons.
My question. This is one, I don't know if you've experienced anywhere else, but we have seven churches in the downtown area. None of them have a parking lot. All parking is along the street. So, in other words, either in areas that you would have designated as, as paid parking, or they're up on the right-of-way somewhere. So, have you experienced a situation where entire congregations have, have to pay each one individually? Because many of, many of the church's congregations are made up of people who are not city residents. And I'm concerned about that. I'll give you an example, St. Phillips has noonday prayer every Wednesday. Where are those people gonna park? Well, they find a place alongside the chapel, but that is right-of-way. And if that's taken away, or if that's paid, I, I've gotta say, it really rubs me the wrong way to think that people have to pay to go to church.
What if we tied ten percent? Or twenty, just to be good?
I would hope that you're doing that anyway.
Almost every town we serve has churches that people park in the right-of-way. And we make provisions for that, that, you know, in that area. We do not enforce paid parking for the duration of their services. Now, the issue is really not the Sunday morning services or the Saturday afternoon or evening services or whatever. The issue is the weddings. More and more weddings are occurring Friday at three. Those are the ones that people have to pay to park. I mean, the regular church service on Sunday morning, we stay away from those areas. We know what those are. And that's really up to you to help us define where those areas are. That's not a problem for us.
Unfortunately, most of the churches have funerals much more frequently than they have weddings.
And, and, and where there's a funeral, they're pretty obvious. We can just ignore that and let the church run it on their own. That's not a problem.
I don't think we're unique in that, I mean, Ritzel Beach is an example, is significantly tighter than Southport with regards to lot sizes and street space. We, we have ninety-foot right-of-ways here in town, they don't experience that there. In some cases, theirs are twenty feet. So, I don't, I don't think we're reinventing the wheel, we're not unique or special in the sense that this hasn't already been done before. So, I, I am, and have been for a long time, we have to find money, and this is a lot of money.
I have a question for you, sir.
Yes, sir.
The twenty, you have to pay, to pay before midnight, which could be six hours, or the fine gets doubled. Is that non-negotiable?
It's up to the town, it's up to you.
So we don't have to have that?
You do not have that.
I'm quite familiar with parking issues.
You do not have that, we have.
I just find that to be outrageous. I understand the other people do it, but they're, they're just, they're, to, to get, anybody who gets a parking ticket is upset at themselves, upset at the world, and they may not actually know enough to even look to see that they have to pay within six hours of getting the ticket. So that is an issue that I have. The next one is due, due process.
But, but that is specifically up to?
I got that.
The board.
To the board to decide. That's why I was asking, is, is that non-negotiable on your part?
Those are features, those are features that we provide.
Mr. Mayor, another way to think about that is the fines fifty dollars and you're actually getting a benefit to pay it.
No, the fine is whatever we make it.
Right, whatever that is, but you're getting a discount of fifty percent.
But, but due, due process, what's the due process of this whole system?
Mayor? The, the fines that are given out, money's collected, where does that money go?
Well, that's, that's, that's one of my questions because current, Oak Island, I know, has the statute that allows them to keep the fine. I'm gonna ask, I'm putting the lieutenant on the spot here. We do not have that legislative approval. So if we were to start this tomorrow, I'm not sure that we can keep the money. But they, they have, Raleigh gave them that. We do not have that because we've asked about that in the past and have been rebuffed on getting that permission. So that, that's an issue right off the bat that we have to look at.
Every town that I have worked with has gone back to the state and asked for an exemption. And everyone has been granted within the last three, four years that I am aware of. So if you have been rebuffed, I would say you need to get with your local congressman and take that up with the state again.
Well, I just put that out as, as an issue that we would need to work on. But my next, but my real question is due process. What's your due process?
Our due process for somebody that files a dispute, does that through an online form on our system. We've got a multi-level review process depending on what the issue is. Most of the problems and disputes are handled by the first level, you know, support person. Typically, the most prominent issue is somebody entered their license plate wrong when they got a permit. And they're like, oh, okay, we can fix that and void out the citation and you're done. If they dispute it further, then it goes through a review process through Alyssa's team. And then ultimately, the final review process comes to me. I've done extensive training and investigation from previous years of experience.
You get thirty-five percent if they're found guilty. How in the world can that possibly be an impartial person sitting to decide the fate?
We can also have an additional process that, that I believe some of their towns do. So, you can also delegate a final review after them to me. Or if you would rather it to come to a body such as the Board of Adjustment, then we can make provisions for that.
We, we also allow, we also allow the town to, you know, whether it's through the town manager or a chief of police.
Well, I, I don't think the manager will have time on his hands to, to do all the, but you've answered my question is, there is a sys, there is a process to have the due process continue beyond the person or the company that has a vested interest in money and getting thirty-five percent and having a neutral person look at it if they wish to appeal that to someone else who's neutral about and doesn't, does, their salaries or their, their benefits and nothing is, is impacted whether they say the ANA, and that's due process.
We have, we have the ability to go to an impartial. All of the towns that we serve today either delegate that to us and we manage it, or they use the town, which also benefits from the fine.
Yeah, but there's a whole different, there's a whole different.
We, we do not have a third-party preset up to support that for a simple civil violation. This is not a misdemeanor, this is not, and ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, these issues are cut and dry. Here's the ordinance, here's your violation, here's your picture of the vehicle in violation. Go to any review person, that is cut and dry. Very rarely do we have anything that goes beyond that.
I can speak to that. I got a parking violation on Oak Island. I had registered and had a pass, and because my plate is a Coastal Land Trust plate for I had registered and had a pass and because my plate is a coastal land trust plate, for some reason it wasn't read properly. So the CT and my SPT were mixed up in their system. It was a matter of me reaching out to them and it was dealt with immediately. So I didn't have to pay a fine. I'd already, I already had a pass, but somehow the person who was giving the fines that day misread or I input incorrectly and it was dealt with right away. Now, then this is coming from a person who doesn't want paid parking, just to be very, very clear.
In your seven cities that you serve, has the due process ever ended up in the, the plaintiff going to court against the city?
The simple answer is no. We have had, and I, I hate to make it sound, this sound funny. But in southeastern North Carolina, we have a lot of retired New York attorneys. And I don't mean that negatively, but they believe that they can threaten us with court action and the towns with court action. And in every one of those cases, when presented with a citation record with a picture of their car, a listing of the ordinance from the town, everyone has been dropped. We have never had any action taken to a court of law. Knock on wood.
Now, my concern is if they're unhappy with the outcome with you and your review process, that they then turn and sue the city.
Any person has the right to sue us or the city if they're unhappy. Typically, when you're talking about a $50 parking ticket versus hundreds of dollars in legal fees for a simple citation, it, it's hard to justify. People are upset when they get a parking ticket. I understand. People park blatantly bad and in violation of ordinances and they get a parking ticket and they demand that it be voided out. And we do not do that. We do not support that. They can argue all they want. They can threaten all they want. We don't feel that it would be right to take it, or take that citation away just because they threatened.
What happens if they don't pay?
If they don't pay, after 30 days, we submit it to a collection agency. After the collection agency has gone through their due process of trying to collect that fine, there's no additional fine. There's no additional fees. It's whatever was on the ticket. Ultimately, that gets reported to the credit bureaus as an unpaid debt and goes against their credit record.
So we don't have to have booting or anything like that? Okay, thank you, sir.
Correct.
Any other questions?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
My pleasure. Thank you very much.
All right, that brings us to the agenda item number three, which is amendments to the update to the UDL for consistency. Mo, you're up, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the alderman. This topic was brought to you at your May 8 meeting for a public hearing. And there was no public comment at that public hearing. So these amendments are responding to statutory changes to the chapter 160D, which is our planning enabling ordinances at the state level. So there are going to be changes to section 210, which is planning board action. 215 penalties and remedies for violations. It adds a sections that can talks about transferring lots to unapproved subdivisions and remedies if there are violations to that. And then section 4.4, no subdivisions without the plat approval. And I will entertain any questions you may have. Otherwise, the planning board has recommended approval of these.
Are there any questions up now?
We don't really have a choice here.
That's correct. We're just updating the ordinance to match the language. That's correct, ma'am.
Alderman Moss, hello.
Thank you. I, Mo, I do have a question. Now that we're taking away the violation misdemeanor, all that conversation. It says that we can have a civil penalty. I looked through the state statute and it says we can have a civil penalty and our civil penalty is $25. Is, I couldn't find where that amount was dictated by the state statute. So.
The city can dictate the civil penalty. It is going to be charging daily. So that's a daily penalty that we can enforce.
Right.
Yes.
Well, that's what I wondered if, if there would be in, any consideration for raising that daily penalty? That seems awfully small for a violation.
We can certainly take that and look at it.
I wonder what other communities are doing and that sort of thing.
Look into that, not a, not a problem.
That, that would, that was just my only observation.
And I had the same thing because if we end up taking them to court, our legal fees are a lot more than $25. So there has to be some kind of happy medium. I don't know what that number is, nor do I want to make a draconian that we're taking your first child.
That the state statutes for, and I know we're not an HOA, but state statutes for HOA allow them up to $100 per day per violation. So I don't, I'd like to know what other communities, other communities have been enforcing this same statute. So I'd like to see what perhaps their recommendations are.
So the issue, and Mo and, and the manager, please correct me. The issue here is that at the moment, our statutes are incorrect. So the idea is we'll vote on this and come back and potentially amend it. Would you be, that's okay? Okay, all right.
I just would like Mo to come back with us with some recommendations based on, you know, some data with regard to that since.
Yes, ma'am.
We need that.
So, so if I can read this correctly. I entertain the motion to adopt the amendments of unified ordinance for consistency with the North Carolina General Statute, chapter 160D, and attach the consistency statement.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any conversation on that? Not hearing any, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you. So the next topic is one dear, and dear to my heart. Chief Drew, you're up, sir.
Good morning. I think it's still morning. Prepared before you this morning is a final draft of the City of Southport Emergency Operations Plan. The current emergency operations plan was crafted by City Manager Rob Gandy in 2006. It's been 19 years since this plan has been updated. When Bonnie Theron was the city manager, we started working on updating this very important plan. The current plan is all of 12 to 15 pages long and it was a very minimum, minimal plan. The proposed emergency operation plan is much more in-depth, put together based on recommendations from FEMA, the International City and County Management Association, and also the Brunswick County Emergency Operations Plan. This draft has been reviewed by the city manager and all the department heads. And other than Public Works, the Police Department and Animal Control, I received no comments back. This plan is a collaboration of all departments involved during a disaster or a state of emergency. When you begin to look at the plan, there's an informative table of contents. In that table of contents, there's a statement of purpose. The City of Southport Emergency Operation Plan was developed to address multiple hazards which threaten the city. Through use of a functional format, the plan encourages an integrated emergency management system approach to disaster and fosters prompt, efficient and coordinated response operations by elements of the emergency organization. The plan presents a basic plan, which serves as a summary document to 16 functional annexes. The annexes define who will be responsible for each function in an emergency. Defining the roles of each response agency reduces confusion, chaos and conflict during an emergency and significantly decreases vulnerability of public, of the public and their property to hazardous threats. This plan meets the requirements for FEMA planning guidance and legal responsibilities identified in the North Carolina General Statute, chapter 166A. It provides all the necessary elements to ensure that local government can fulfill its legal responsibilities for emergency preparedness. In this plan, there is a basic plan with a purpose, a situation and assumptions. And it also, the city, as you know, is exposed to many hazards, all of which the potential to disrupt the community, cause damage and create casualties. Potential hazards identified for the city are in high risk, as we've heard today, flooding, hurricanes, tornadoes, thunderstorms, windstorms, cybersecurity attacks and extreme heat. There's moderate risk to hazardous material accidents, transportation accidents, active shooter or domestic terrorism attacks, pandemic, winter storms, drought, major fires, civil disorder, terrorist incidents, fixed nuclear facility disaster, tsunamis, major ship and boating accidents in our channel out here on the river, coastal hazards. And then we also have a low risk of earthquakes or tsunamis. So all of these situations are covered in this plan. If you look in the table of contents, the next is organization and assignment of responsibilities, which we have went into detail in the plan to give assignment and responsibilities to the mayor and the Board of Aldermen, the city manager, the incident commander, the public information officer, the police chief. That includes animal control, fire department, EMS, rescue, public works, finance director, building inspections and fire marshal's office, community relations plays a point, a part in the plan, the city clerk, IT and also parks and recreation in evacuation purposes. It also talks about the direction and control, continuity of government, administration and logistics, plan development and maintenance, training, exercise and action, after action reports. Then the plan has a list of common functions and annexes. The annexes are a more in-depth look of each department's duties and how they will function in a state of emergency. This emergency operations plan is NIMS compliant. That is the National Incident Management System. And that system is a national system that's used during an emergency or a disaster to stay organized. I'm currently working on chapter six and chapter seven of the Southport Code of Ordinances. It has not been updated since 1974, which is the emergency management and the fire prevention and protection codes in our ordinances. During that time, I want to include the NIMS discussion for city use and make sure that we have the approval in there, in that, in those codes. Then the plan goes to the appendixes. It has appendix A, which is a sample emergency declaration. Appendix B, staffing levels of the EOC. Appendix C talks about the organizational chart of the city. Appendix D, instructions to pet owners. And appendix E is a standard operating procedure for the emergency operations center. To solve the problem of having a 19-year-old emergency operations plan, I have included that this plan be reviewed at a minimum of once a year, but also after each major emergency, if needed. It would be changed. There's a chart in the plan to list the date of a change and what changed so that we have records of the change and we can keep this emergency operations plan up to date. Every department head will sign off on the document after approval by the board and make sure that they know their duties and their responsibilities. I appreciate Bonnie Theron for working on this plan with me. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them today.
Are there questions for the chief?
I just have a couple of questions, Charles. I'm familiar with mutual aid agreements with the police and surrounding communities and stuff. But it pointed out the Public Works develop mutual aid agreements. That's not something I'm familiar with.
The only like mutual aid agreements with Public Works would be like for their, the, the plan that they have to have in function, like for debris pickup and things like that.
Okay. Okay. It's not with other communities.
Right.
That's, that's what I, I'm used to seeing it that way.
Other questions? Okay, go ahead.
And then under concept of operations, receipt of donated good, it says volunteer coordinators list of available personnel, personnel resources. Who, who's the volunteer coordinator?
That's going to fall into the community relations department.
Okay.
So if, if we had a need for, let's say we had a need for humanitarian aid, if there was a disaster and we had to set up to give items away like we had to do during Hurricane Florence, then the, the community relations director would, would coordinate those efforts.
Okay. Also, just a couple of, I think these are just housekeeping things. It said under situation and assumptions, it's 104 in the packet. I don't know what the page number of the thing is. But it talks about the emergency public information and it refers to the city's public information director's roster. I think that you might want that to be officer. You refer to it as officer in there.
Be changed.
And then just also as a point of reference, and this was closer to the beginning. And where you first mentioned work with animal control officer. Just, and you refer to it as animal protective services later in the document, but that's that old language that we don't want to encourage.
I missed that on correction.
It's all good.
What page is that on?
It's the page, it's like page six or something. Yeah, I think that's what it, four, five, four, five, six, seven, page seven.
Okay.
And because it says protective services and then animal welfare plans, I think. So that would make that be in alignment.
Okay.
And then the only other question I had was about where it said, and this has to do, I get with the terrorism one, where it says private facilities. I just wondered who, private facilities, is that business owners? Like if there was something happening.
What page is that on?
Oh, Lord, it's, it's 150 out of 169 on our packet, but you don't have individual pages on each one of.
Is it, is it under, is it under the annexes?
It's on, yeah, it's, it's under the annexes where it talks about annex P, so it's near the end where it says private facilities at the end of annex P. I was just curious what that was. It, it's a, it's a headline that says private facilities. You want my, my page, so you, it just.
I, I think I'm almost there. Yes, I do see.
I just was curious about that.
That would be a situation like if we, sometimes like the, for instance, the Brunswick Senior Resource Center, we can use as a temporary evacuation site. If we needed to put people there to store them. I know one time we had a fire at one of the nursing homes and they opened that facility up for us to transport patients there. That's, that's what the private facility is talking about. Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions?
Should we have an after action report requirement in the previous iteration of this?
We probably didn't. Well, there may have been an after action report and we've always done after action debriefing of.
But, and I think that after PTC eight, we really saw in real time, that wasn't thankfully a hurricane that we were trying to. a hurricane that we were trying to deal with. So it didn't have the same kind of area-wide issues that what we experienced. So I think that the after-action report there really would make a difference for us and for us to continue doing that going forward. I think it's great to have that written into this, because if we are doing something that we can do better, it's better to know and adjust. So thank you for adding that piece in more detail.
We always do that on any major incident that we have at the fire department. Now, even, I mean, like a house fire or anything, we always have a debriefing where we sit down and talk about our strengths and our weaknesses. But it's good to have that.
I want to start off by saying, and you know this already, that I'm ecstatic that we have this now, because I've looked at the original one, and was quite underwhelmed. However, when we do something like this, and I'm assuming we're going to vote on this action, this action then spurs two other things that have to take place, as I understand it. One, in the document, it talks about a standard operating procedure for each department, and it says that each department has to generate their SOPs to support this document. And I'm not sure, having once before been given that task and not knowing how to do it, I didn't do it well my first time out. So I would expect that there's going to be department heads that are going to kind of struggle, and they don't need to struggle as much because we're not inventing the wheel here. They just need to be directed to where they get the information and then tweak it a little bit. This can be done before September, literally. It could be done before September and get all the SOPs in. And I say that because that's when we are peak hurricane season happens. If we were inventing the wheel, it would be a lot longer. The other part of it is, as soon as we sign this, then certainly the manager, the department heads, and literally everybody's evaluation from top to bottom of the organization would need to have an inject put in this, that they understand what their primary role is, a secondary role, and there is no more, that's not in my job description, because a town of this size, during a disaster, everybody can be assigned something, whether it was their primary, or secondary, or tertiary, or whatever number it is. And they would need to know that, so we don't have that issue come up. But those are things that can be fixed relatively easy. And again, I thank you very much for doing this, and I look forward to the other documents that'll support this, and we are on a march. And thank you very much for you and the manager for getting this done. And I thank Bonnie in the past, and I will thank her again for making sure this moves forward. Any other questions? So I think we have to do something, don't we? So the requested action is to approve the 2025 Emergency Operations Plan, so I would entertain a motion to do that?
Amendments.
I'm sorry.
With the amendments?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, with all the attachments and appendages and...
The changes that were made.
Oh, yes, with those. Yes. So there's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Not hearing any. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass unanimously. Thank you, sir. So now, we are at the manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief today. Just wanted to highlight one of our significant projects going on. Our shoreline stabilization project continues to move forward. We're moving forward with Phase 1. We've got all the easements in the area of Phase 1 executed, so we're moving forward with that process. That includes the new revetment and the repair of the existing revetment, which is adjacent to the downtown waterfront park, and the areas near Oliver's and the hotel down there. So we're moving forward with that. We hope to have all those designs, permits, and process, including bidding to start construction by the fall, to begin construction early winter this year in 2025. At the same time, we're moving forward simultaneously with the other Phase 2, to get that designed and all those permits moving as well, to ensure that that project's moving forward with the requisite state deadlines we have. Secondly, last week, for those who have not heard, the city closed on our 400-plus acre property at Sunny Point, transferred that to the State Wildlife Resources Commission for their conservation, and the city has received our check for that transaction. So we're moving forward, and that's completed there. That's all I have today.
All right, for the managers, obviously, we heard a lot about the rain, and I just wanted to say thank you to all the staff, the chief, the fire chief, the manager, our PIO, everybody did a great job on that. A story, Fodell Street, as a matter of fact. There was a car that was driving down the height of the storm, drove into, off Howe Street into Fodell Street, and got flooded out right there. And it got stopped. Eventually, the BMW is now totaled. But when I spoke to the owner yesterday, he had nothing but compliments for the fire department and the police department. The officer jumped out, went through the water in his uniform to help them. And if we can, and I should have talked to Linda when she was here, there was a nurse that came out and helped get the wife out of the passenger window. So I really would like to follow up and find out how that happened. On the agenda, as denoted on the agenda, the weather tower. My goodness, at the end of this meeting, I'm going to sign the document to start the process. I think 14 days to start it, 90 day, watch this, a contract with an ending, 90 days to finish it, and so we'll be moving forward with that. And with that, Alderman Lay, do you have any comments?
I'd like to just thank the fire department, the police department, everybody that handled everything so well in this recent unpleasant. I'm afraid that this has become the new normal, and we're going to be doing a lot more of this. That's all I've got to say.
Alderman Spencer?
Alderman Spencer is emotionally drained. Going to try to follow up on some things so I won't forget. I lost a good friend this last week. It's a common thing when you grow up in Southport. You go to a lot of funerals. So my friend was Mary Dee Harrington. She was actually Mary Dee Swan. She was the granddaughter of Captain Charlie. People are familiar with Bald Head and the houses over there. I was fortunate to grow up around Mary Dee in a family, an adopted family, and she was very devout to her family and to her heritage and her culture. Again, this young lady got the experience of living on Bald Head before there was anyone. It was a dangerous place, a place that really people were told to stay away from because of the adverse conditions. So she grew up in this heritage. She lived here all her life. I was influenced by her father, Reese, who was Captain Charlie's son, and I named my real estate company Lightkeeper Realty, because I didn't want it to be Mark Spencer Realty, because Mark Spencer wouldn't last but so long. But the Lightkeeper was the one that kept the light on in the lighthouse so that the maritime industry could survive and their diligence. So I pay homage to the Lightkeeper, Captain Charlie, and his family, and we will miss Mary Dee Harrington in our community deeply. The drains, they're very important. It is an emotional roller coaster to go through a flood and see the water come in in a two-hour period of time. And it is becoming the norm in a lot of places. People thinking, well, I keep hearing that realtors lie, and a lot of times, well, I grew up on Cape Fear Drive, and I can tell you what happens on Cape Fear Drive, but I don't always watch Lord Street, and I don't always watch Castle, and I haven't always been on Fodell, but it seems like our flooding is getting out of control. So it's definitely something important. I had an anniversary. My wife has put up with me for 10 years. It's amazing. She's going to heaven, for sure. She should have a pass. So I want to thank Renee Sloan Spencer for keeping me alive, and when I go home at night, and I'm cussing, and I'm crying, and I'm all kinds of things, she puts up with me. So I really appreciate her. That's it.
Alderman Kelly?
Thank you to the staff for taking care of everything Tuesday evening. That was a lot, and I appreciate the updates from the manager as things were progressing, just letting us know that you were watching and everything was taken care of. So that was great. The public schools are out for the summer now. Our summer program for City of Southport is beginning, so just keep your eye out for the local children, because there are local children. And I got to spend a beautiful Southport day yesterday sailing in the Cape Fear, and it just reminds me why I love being here. So put in right at the yoga dock and went out over to backside of Bird Island and came back, and it was just a really lovely Southport day. So just one of those happy moments. Just wanted to share.
Alderman Davis?
Parks and Recreation Committee meeting, which is normally on the third Tuesday at 6, is going to be tomorrow, June the 3rd, at 6 o'clock at the Parks and Rec Building, which is next to the gym. And judging from the fact that we had eight people apply to fill vacant positions or upcoming vacant positions on that committee, there's a lot of public interest. So I hope everyone will come, if you can. And another thing, if you don't know, every evening at 7:30, volunteers do the flag lowering in a very moving ceremony. The volunteers do this between Memorial Day, starting on Memorial Day and ending on Labor Day. It's groups, it's families. If you are anywhere in town and can do it, the flagpole is right up on Waterfront Park.
Alderman Carroll? Alderman Moss, hello.
Thank you. Just want to acknowledge all of the volunteers and the donations to make the Weather Tower project come to fruition. It has been going on a couple of three years with private donations. And two off the top of my head, I don't know who all, but I know DSI donated, I think, $10,000 to this project, and I think Cannon Foundation gave us a grant for $5,000. So those are two of the big, but it is those donations that made this possible. Then there were private donors, those that added, I think it added up to $40,000 in private donations altogether.
$179,000.
We got it all through donations.
I believe so, right? Yeah, $179,000.
Well, damn.
There was no taxpayers' money put into the project. And with that, I entertain a motion to adjourn?
Adjourn.
All in favor? Any opposed? We stand adjourned.